Okay, so before we start the meeting tonight, I just wanted to let everyone in the audience know that in order for the Committee of the Whole to take action on any items that are on the agenda tonight, we actually need to have eight members of City Council here. So you see that we have six aldermen who are present. We also have Alderman Saron, who is participating via Zoom. And so we can't take action on any of the items on the agenda until we get one more member of City Council in attendance. However, there are some matters on our agenda that are not requiring of a vote. And so we will attend to those first on the agenda and then hope that we, everyone can clap when the eighth person arrives. Here's what you need, though, in order to be effective.
Little hammer, little hammer of power.
All right. All right, we'll call the Committee of the Whole meeting to order. First item on the agenda is roll call.
Rosa?
Here.
Lancy? Beck?
Here.
Peiper?
Here.
Sulfah? Wolf? Malone?
Here.
Baron?
Here.
Lehman? Ayazi?
Here.
Malay?
I shower today.
Uwer?
I'm just kidding.
Saron?
Here.
Vogelsinger?
Yay! You saved the day.
All right, a reminder to everyone that if you're going to address the council, please come up to the microphone and state your name for the record and make sure that we can hear you and folks at home on BATV can hear you as well. Next item is to approve the minutes from January 25, 2025. I have a motion.
Second.
Motion by Sulfah, second by Malone. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, items to be removed, added, or changed. Are there any tonight?
Yeah.
Wonderful. And now we'll move on to matters from the public. So is there anyone in the audience tonight that has something to speak about that is not on the agenda? All right, seeing none, we will move on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda reads as follows. Resolution 2025-20-R, Amendment to the 2024 Budget for Interfund Transfers. Resolution 2025-9-R, Authorization to Purchase a 2025 Hybrid Ford Maverick Truck from Fair Oaks Ford of Naperville, Illinois for $33,956. Resolution 2025-21-R, Authorization to Purchase a 2021 Sewer Camera Trailer from Standard Equipment Company of Elmhurst, Illinois for an amount not to exceed $50,000. Ordinance 2025-11, Authorizing an Intergovernmental Agreement for Participation in the Illinois Public Works Mutual Aid Network. Resolution 2025-15-R, Authorizing Supplement Number One for Construction Engineering Services for the Prairie Street and Wilson Street Intersection Improvements, Stage Two, with V3 Companies Limited in the amount of $43,163. Ordinance 2025-14, Declaring Certain Property to be Surplus and Authorizing Sale. Resolution 2025-23-R, Authorizing Execution of a Contract with Performance Construction and Engineering LLC for Waterline Replacement on Bernadette Lane and South Batavia Avenue. Resolution 2025-22-R, Authorizing Execution of Task Order Number 50 with Engineering Enterprises Incorporated for Construction Engineering Services of the Water Main Replacement on Bernadette Lane and South Batavia Avenue. Resolution 2025-24, Abating $410,456.26 for the tax heretofore levied for the tax year 2024 to pay debt service on $6 million in general obligation bonds, Series 2027 of the City of Batavia, Kane and DuPage Counties, Illinois. Resolution 2025-25-R, Abating $700,400 for the tax heretofore levied for the tax year 2024 to pay debt service on $3,195,000 general obligation bonds, refunding Series 2019 of the City of Batavia, Kane and DuPage Counties. Resolution 2025-26-R, Abating $2256,000 for the tax heretofore levied for the tax year 2024 to pay debt service on $4 million general obligation bonds, Series 2020, for the City of Batavia and Kane and DuPage County. Resolution 2025-27-R, Abating $1,493,050 for the tax heretofore levied for the tax year 2024 to pay debt service on $22,570,000 general obligation bonds, refunding Series 2015 of the City of Batavia, Kane and DuPage Counties. And Resolution 2025-28-R, Authorizing Task Order Number 10D with Baxter &amp; Woodman Incorporated for the GIS GPS Stormwater Utility Field Data Collection in the amount not to exceed $75,000. And Ken, I will move that we approve the consent agenda as read.
Okay.
Motion by Beck, second by Sulfah. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, then we will move on and let the record reflect that Sarah Vogelsinger is here at 7:06.
And Alderman.
And Uwer. Sorry, I was looking down. Uwer's here. All right, then we'll move on to item number seven, which is ordinance 2025-13, Grant of Variance for Building Setbacks for 414 South Batavia Avenue. And Alderman, Uwer, you are welcome to take over the direction as the senior member now that you're here.
That's all right. I'll let you continue.
Thanks.
Yes, tonight's first ordinance is 2025-13. This is a grant of variances, essentially it's kind of twofold set of variances. Two would be for a south or side setback and an R3 zone property that's at 414 South Batavia Avenue. The applicant, Splain and Sons, or Mike Splain, on behalf of Splain and Sons, is looking to demolish the building at that property that's rather old, but it's in very poor condition at the moment. The building was constructed in 1875, but it's been vacant about, I believe, 12 or 13 years altogether. The building setbacks for the new duplex that would place the residence would be to basically allow a side perimeter landscape setback and a perimeter building setback in that district or handled differently or separately to have a nine-foot setback along that south property line for the structure. And then the two other variances address an existing garage, basically to legalize those. So in parts, the Plan Commission did find that there is some unique challenges with the property in terms of its existing configuration, as well as the existing non-contributing status of overall lot size. At the hearing, there were several members of the public that spoke. Two members of the public had particular concerns about drainage, that staff let them know that with the permitting process, that final engineering and grading of the site would be evaluated and if there's any items that could be or need to be corrected as a result of that, that those would be included in those reviews. There was another speaker that questioned the timing of the, or I should say, the age of the structure. However, the applicant's representative did note several issues with the property in terms of the overall conditions, including the foundation, that would make it extremely difficult under the current market to really restore the property where a new fresh start would be needed. A fourth speaker did express their support, but discussed other setbacks within the district. Overall, the Commission did have a lengthy discussion about the proposed setbacks. And as noted in the staff report, there was several additional conditions that the applicant and their architect noted would be difficult to otherwise try and address by making the building smaller. So the Plan Commission and Standing Board of Appeals was satisfied that the applicant is asking for the least amount of requests possible for the request to action. So they did recommend approval by a vote of five to zero, and their recommendations are included in the ordinance before you tonight.
Any questions? Comments for staff?
I would just comment that I'm glad to see a duplex being built. You know, we've talked about that, having some higher density. So I think it's, obviously the property has not been used, so it's great to see use. And that's exactly the kind of stuff we're looking to see people do. So I'm in favor of this.
This builder's got a good history of making things look real nice.
And to state that that property's in at the moment, not ideal. I think in the application or the memo, it was three units going down to two, but three empty units, first two full units, obviously, kind of a net positive there.
Yes, yeah, the property could be, is configured for three units, but you know, historically has been vacant for a much greater length of time at this point, so.
And do we think that those drainage issues that were brought up, is that going to be relatively easy to fix, or would we anticipate sort of neighbors coming to us later? Worried about that?
Some of the comments that they were asking, or questions and concerns that they were relating, may not necessarily be generated by this particular property. With, there's basically on either side of this property, there's kind of some large existing parking lots that are not curbed and, you know, have potential for causing some drainage concerns. In respect to, one of the questions they had was kind of the amount of impervious. And while we didn't have that number, what is proposed does comply with our requirements for amount of green space on a R3 zone property, so, which is 50%, which, so they do meet that. What would typically happen was with the permit review, you know, if there are situations that can be addressed or, you know, best practices that can be added, with it only being one lot, there's not detention and things like that, but there might be other things that could be implemented that our engineering division can request and, you know, try and address those things.
Anything else? All right, anyone like to make a motion?
All moved.
Second?
Motion by Sulfah, second by Uwer. Any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Wonderful, motion carries. Thank you. All right, then we're moving on to our discussion of energy audits and rebate. Max, I'll let you introduce this.
Hello, everyone. So tonight we have our vendors who submitted RFPs for this project. The way we're thinking about doing this is giving them roughly five minutes to give a brief overview of what their program is, what they're intending to do, a couple minutes for Q and A, and then, you know, finish this discussion at the next council meeting and select a vendor at that time. To your discussion, you can run it however you want, kind of what questions you want to ask to people, but given kind of the broadness and the scope and whatnot, we wanted to give City Council desire to ask questions to the vendors and kind of make sure that whatever direction we're going in is reflecting what the City Council wants to do. So I'll start off with, I'll introduce Valencia Roner from Energy Infrastructure Partners. They were one of the vendors who submitted for the energy audit and rebate program, and the floor is yours.
Good evening. It's a pleasure to be here. My name is Valencia Roner. I am the General Manager and Midwest Regional Director for Energy Infrastructure Partners. We're headquartered in New York, but we have had a significant presence in Chicago for quite some time. Our submission, quite frankly, just proposes that we work with local vendors or those who are BPI certified, that's the Building Performance Institute standard, who work with energy audits and work with market rate customers in a way to provide rebates if they participate to, based on the recommendations that are made. And then even the rebate we proposed, I believe it was $75. And then if they move forward with improvements as recommended, they'd get a rebate, again, I believe, of $150. We submitted this back in, I think, October, so forgive me, I'm trying to remember all of that. But bottom line is, we have a history of doing this work. Currently, we do work with utilities throughout the country locally. We do work with ComEd and working with their multifamily program we just completed. And also currently, we're doing a Healthier Homes program in, with Ameren, Illinois, in central Illinois, when working in, we have crews in Peoria as well as Decatur, working with those who are low to moderate income. So while we propose a design, we are committed to working with city administration in a design that works best for them. It's just merely a proposal, but we're local, we're here. Even one of our team members who proposed is a local coach for some of the basketball teams here in Batavia. I want to make sure I'm saying it correctly. Please excuse me, I'm new to the area. I moved here and relocated from North Carolina almost a year ago, so, but it's a pleasure. I love it here, as I was sharing with the city administrator. But anyway, I didn't know, based on that high-level overview, if you had any questions or you had an opportunity to review the proposal and had any thoughts that you wanted to share. Let's just start.
So I guess I'll jump in. I just want to make sure I'm sort of fully following the proposal. I did have a chance to read it over, but you know, this is a little outside my wheelhouse here.
No, no worries.
What were, what you're bringing to the table here is sort of an opportunity for Batavia residents to get an energy audit completed.
That's correct.
And then your services would assist in then getting a rebate through the bag fee funds that we've provided of, first $75 for the audit itself. If they don't decide to take any action, they just get sort of $75 back.
Right.
After they've already paid for the audit.
Mm-hmm.
And then if they do make an improvement, that would be an additional $150. Is that on the audit price or on the improvement?
That would be on the improvement.
The improvement, okay, so they'd have to have sort of receipts and whatever.
Correct. And standard improvements tend to be air ceiling, duct ceiling, and insulation. That's been traditionally the DOE standard. And so that's would be the priority to mitigate any air leakage, you know, keeping the home warmer in the winter and cooler in the summer.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I sort of tracked how it would roll out.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
And so just, again, just to kind of make it so it's easily understood, who would this all be available to? Who are you focusing on? Who's your target group here?
Target audience would be the market rate customers, those, you know, your everyday customer would try to work through HOAs and, you know, work with local, you know, business owners too, to communicate the availability. We would try to work with local community action agencies to try to service those who are maybe low income, so they could take advantage. Maybe we could work with a local vendor who would do it at no cost if there were funds available through like a community action agency or things of that nature. We're used to that kind of design. But basically, open to everyone with a goal of trying to at least hit like 10% of those who would be considered to low to moderate income.
Could you kind of describe, thank you so much for the thorough proposal and the references and everything like that.
Sure.
Of the projects that you worked on, which one would be the most similar to what we are asking our contractor to do? And then could you speak to any successes or challenges that you encountered?
Well, since I would serve as a program director, most recently, I started in this business with the Department of Energy, running their Better Business, Better Buildings Program. And so it was very similar to this, where we worked with constituents. I actually, at that time, was a city of Greensboro, North Carolina employee, managing this program and working in their planning department. And basically, residents would provide an application. In this case, they needed to qualify from an income perspective. And then we would work with local vendors in the area who had been vetted and had a good reputation. And then they would go do an audit, propose services, the priority again was air ceiling, duct ceiling, and insulation. The auditors would, and the construction folks, usually one in the same, would then be subject to a QA QC, which is known as a Quality Control and Quality Assurance issue. Then they would in turn get paid for their work. So, and in those who were of a market rate, they would get their rebate in return. And in that particular case, we, the city had a contract with the Department of Energy where they had to leverage like $8 million and serve 3,000 customers. When I came on board, only 19 homes had been done in 19 months. By the time I left to go work for Duke Energy, we had done over 1,800 homes, were able to get the contractors on track, renegotiated with the Department of Energy, who allowed for extra time and reallocation of the budget so that the intended funds can move forward. We worked with, I built a CRM system that allowed us to track that funding and be able to calculate the KWH savings that the DOE needed to help leverage and also to, and in turn, it served the utility as well, because utilities get extra benefit by helping customers save energy, extra tax benefits in their EBIT by helping customers save energy as well, depending on the respective program. So that would be probably the largest example of the experience. And then not just myself, but our Vice President, Matt Koch, cut his teeth in residential, he's been there 20, 25 years. So we've got a great team that can do the program, execute effectively.
Any other comments or need for additional information? Okay, thank you so much. Thank you for your consideration.
And if you think of something later, you can contact me anytime.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Next up, we'll have Craig Schneider from Sustainability Construction.
I'm Craig Schneider. I'm a sixth ward resident here in Batavia, business owner for about five years, see a number of faces I know from the community. First, I want to vet a little bit of information about our last speaker, that the details about that program are very much in line with other programs that are available currently to Batavia residents. Nycor, Commonwealth Edison, North Shore Gas, Peoples Gas, all have programs very similar. And obviously, the only one of those that would apply to Batavia residents would be Nycor Gas or Nycor Energy. Those rebates are similar, but larger than the rebates being offered by the previous speaker, though they are speaking to the efficacy of what was being proposed there. What I'm proposing and what my goal here is to essentially create a novel program. I have participated as a Building Performance Institute building analyst and envelope professional, as what was previously mentioned. As a weatherization contractor, I've implemented these improvements, these energy efficiency improvements. I've crawled around in attics, and I understand that they cost a little bit of money. What I want to do is I want to create something that doesn't just lessen the burden, that eliminates the burden. I think we need to make this a desirable goal for our residents to want to conduct these services. And the way that I think we can do that is by incentivizing that with very large amounts of money. I think much smaller number of improved residences in the dozens, not in the hundreds or the thousands. And if we do have two or three dozen residences, we can offer a thousand for residents that have over 80% of the average median income level, and $3,000 per resident for those who can demonstrate that they have less than the Batavia 80% AMI value. There's a little bit of a gap between our regional low-income housing coverage for weatherization improvements and where Batavia sits at that 80% value. And I think this could help to fill the gap with my proposal. This could help to fill the gap to provide a larger amount of money to perform these energy improvements compared to what would currently be offered as free from those other organizations previously mentioned. So to summarize, air sealing, insulation improvements, window replacements, heating and cooling equipment replacements would all be covered by my proposed program. My goal is to have the lion's share of an edict on what is proposed to be determined based on Department of Energy and an IRS compliant energy audit. There is a codified definition of what an energy audit must contain, and I feel that we should provide an audit through this program that satisfies that. And that term is outlined in my report, excuse me, that guideline is outlined in my report in stating that you need to provide a quantifiable estimated energy savings and a cost of those services in a compliant energy audit. The only way to do that effectively is to utilize an energy modeling software for your residents. We don't need to get into a long diatribe about what this is, but the City of Batavia already has an acceptable model for energy modeling that is followed through the Building Department, or the Building Division, excuse me. Those same modeling softwares that are expected or allowed for new construction can be applied to these renovation options. And I think that if we can adopt energy modeling as an option to determine quantifiable and verifiable kilowatt-hour savings or natural gas therm savings, we can justify what's proposed to ultimately make sure that we can get something that ultimately sees the return we need. If we, as City of Batavia, being a municipal electric provider, also want to encourage electrification, there are ways that we can save energy by also promoting electrification, which is another side benefit that we could have, with a much broader approach to what would be covered in this. So ultimately, to summarize, we have an energy model for residents, which is being proposed through this, through my RFP response. That energy model has an extremely broad option of what can be a viable use of the program funds. As long as it has a demonstratable kilowatt-hour or natural gas therm savings, it should be something that can be relied upon as a viable option that the city would want to fund in order to improve energy efficiency in our residences. I encourage you to read the report. I don't know of any other program in the nation that exists like this, and so I think we have a lot of autonomy, and it might be an option to not only have autonomy, but also have a lot of savings.
Who would like to go first? Kevin?
I guess I'll jump in again, and I'll kind of review, make sure I'm understanding first here. So I think what I'm hearing here is the target population would be smaller, I think you said, kind of in the dozens.
Correct.
I think on your chart, you know, kind of 25 units was kind of what you'd thrown in your chart in your proposal. But for those 25 or so whatever folks, they're going to get a sort of a full audit at no cost to themselves.
Correct.
And then if they do proceed to make improvements, if they are above 80% AMI, right, sort of market rate folks, they get $1,000 back on whatever they're doing. If they're below market rate, below 80% AMI, they get $3,000 back?
Correct.
Okay, on any improvement.
As a minor correction to that, I would actually, since we don't have a massive amount of programs being proposed here, projects, pardon me, I think it actually makes sense to have separate billing, where the customer is never out that money. The contractor bills the program, and they bill the customer for what's left over. So this is a first dollar spent, so that way there's never potentially money that has to be out if $1,000 is awarded and it's a $999 project. Customer spends no money. The program pays for that. I think that's an interesting, having run through projects before that have failed to get off the ground because of this very thing, I'd like to see this program be able to eliminate that and see more people benefit.
And so just real quick to dive into your proposal here a little bit, it looks like you're averaging kind of, what, four hours onsite, five hours in office? Am I reading that kind of right for an energy audit?
Between nine and 12.
Between nine and 12.
In total, yes.
Yeah. Is that built, I guess, I mean, just, I don't know, I'm not going to be delicate about it. Is it enough money for you to pay your people to do that?
I have my people, and I'm agreeing to it, so yes.
Okay. All right, there you go.
And that's not an hourly rate? That is a flat rate, and if it takes me 16 hours, I make less an hour.
So you say it's first come, first served? Is it, there's going to be some kind of an application process? I mean, what if you get 50 people? Is there like a lottery process? I mean...
To me, the way the program is currently presented, I'm, if my proposal would be accepted, I would encourage City Council to have an active role in helping me to develop the final terms. Ideally, if I was the only one making the decision, it'd be first come, first served. Period.
So you say it's first come, first served? Is it, there's going to be some kind of an application process? I mean, what if you get fifty people? Is there like a lottery process? I mean?
To me, the way the program is currently presented, I'm, if my proposal would be accepted, I would encourage City Council to have an active role in helping me to develop the final terms. Ideally, if I was the only one making the decision, it'd be first come, first served, period. And if we want to, based on a collective decision, put a directive on those with lower income, demonstratable lower income values, I'm great with that, I have no problem. But that would be a term that would be determined prior to the program beginning.
The eighty percent AMI approximately, what is that?
Sixty-two thousand dollars annually.
Sixty-two thousand?
Batavia is not a low-income area, it's not affluent, but, I mean, it doesn't qualify for any of the EPA environmental justice values. That's that value, I think that's roughly thirty-six thousand dollars. Absolutely memory, I'm not verifying that.
Yeah, just approximately.
That twenty-five thousand dollar gap in there would be a great, sixty-one thousand dollars a year is not a lot of money, but you don't qualify for a lot of free funds you otherwise would if you were below that thirty-six thousand dollar range. I think this can help be a nice moderate middle ground. Three thousand dollars gets a lot done for weatherization.
On that, following that topic, would there also be, would it be reasonable to prioritize older homes if we were to have a prioritization schedule of submissions? Just to, as I imagine, older homes are going to have a lot more energy usage.
In a perfect world, I would say that the first year of this program, assuming the funds exist for a number of fiscal years, I would like the first year to be easier to have people participate. And in the second year, we have more people who would like to participate than we have spots, and then we can start to prioritize based on the data that we saw in the first year, both in income, did anybody take advantage of that low-income offering? Or age of home, did we have a, you know, this was more suited to suit homes prior to nineteen seventy-eight when fire codes went into effect, which actually also have a lot to do with energy efficiency. So we'd gather that data, or I would encourage data be gathered by someone else. If I don't run the program next year, then that's fine. But I think that there's just a lot of verifiable equity that could come by looking at what we've done and then doing better next year. Right now, I want to see more people do it. And I'll piggyback on a question you haven't asked, excuse me. I perform energy audits, I bet I do four a year. I, there's not a lot of people who knock on my door to do them. I think to do them well, someone paying twelve hundred dollars to have no improvement made to their home, it's a hard sell. If the city of Batavia pays that twelve hundred dollars and someone realizes the benefit of being able to see, if I put windows in and it costs me twelve thousand dollars, how much will that save me annually? Down to the dollar, what will that save me annually? Boy, that doesn't save me very much. If I spend two thousand dollars and weatherize my attic, I save four times as much as if I put windows in, wow, I'm going to do that instead. Giving someone that verifiable data to compare apples to apples, even if they don't run an improvement through this program, they have that after this program is done, and it still helps them in a year, in ten years. When they sell their home, that's a benefit to the next owner and helps you sell it, so.
When you mentioned that the cost of the audit is twelve hundred dollars, can you help us appreciate what is the difference? The other company had, they were reimbursing the seventy-five dollar cost of the audit versus a twelve hundred dollar audit?
Well, that's an apple to orange comparison. That audit in that instance was not that audit price, pardon me, was not specified. That audit might still be a twelve hundred dollar audit. So to just take seventy-five dollars off of that was the comparison there. In reality, I've been in this segment of the business for fifteen years. Fifteen years ago, when energy audits were air quotes around the word new, people would do ninety-nine dollar audits. It's really not, you can't perform a good audit at a home without more than a few hours in that residence. There are performance tests that need to be conducted, and they just take time. If you will go and perform an energy audit in a manner similar to a home inspection, like when you're performing a real estate transaction, you may have a checklist and go through fifteen, twenty things, but it's not as comprehensive as an energy audit that satisfies the requirements of the IRS, what they and how they define an energy audit that qualifies for the tax credit, the hundred and fifty dollar tax credit through the Inflation Reduction Act, or, pardon me, the Department of Energy, how the Department of Energy defines an energy audit. And that language is provided in my proposal. You can provide an audit that doesn't satisfy that requirement, but since that is a universal national definition, it makes sense to justify my actions based upon that.
Else?
Can I say one more thing?
Sure.
I would not, I would not select my proposal if you don't want to do something different. NiCor, ComEd, those utilities that are around here have a pattern of performance for their energy efficiency rebates that they repeat every year. This is different, and it's different on purpose. If you do not want to take that leap, if that doesn't seem like something that Batavia wants to stand behind, don't accept this. I totally would not fault you for that. I want to do something different in Batavia because I live here and I was going to live here for five years, I now live here for eighteen, and I'm not going to move. This will be better for my town, and I think we should do it. But if you don't think that doing something different is worth that leap, that's fine. I do.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Also, I just would say I offered to either company that if there's things that you want to, you know, provide additional information, that you can send that to Max and, you know, if there's any additional information that you want them to have prior to making a decision.
So Max, did you want us to have a discussion now, or are we are going to say that for next meeting?
I was going to suggest we do that next meeting, once you have some time to digest it more and kind of dig through it a little more, but it's totally up to how you want to do it.
I think there might be people who would watch it online, who are up here.
There's so many people.
You know?
All right. Any, all right, any burning questions, though, that you want to get up your chest before we move on?
I just want to say real quick, first off, thanks to both for coming and presenting. I think there are two sort of great programs that could benefit Batavians, and I think it is good use of these funds. And I'm kind of excited that we have two very different proposals, too, so it'll be kind of nice to kind of weigh the pros and cons on this one. So thank you for, both of you for coming, giving great presentations and for giving us some options, right, giving us some real stuff to think about.
Appreciate it very much, thank you. All right, moving on to the bag education fee, bag fee education campaign.
So similar, yes, similarly, we had two vendors for this. I'll start with Gary Ricky from Orbis Media.
Hey, guys. Good evening, I'm Gary Ricky from Orbis, and I have a proposal in for the, for the bag fee education program. And my specialization the past couple of years is short videos, AKA TikToks. And if you've seen the road diet videos, or the emergency preparedness videos, or the street stories with the mayor, that's, that's the work I've done with interns from Batavia High School. So I mentor, been mentoring these students since 2020, and I'm teaching these, these students how to help interview and produce these videos and then distribute out to social media. And that's the core of what I'm proposing for education on the bag fees, would be to get as many experts and opinions of the people behind the good reasons why we should be doing this, interview those folks, and then distribute those videos everywhere in high volume. You know, I'm estimating fifty to a hundred videos over the course of the year, one to two per week. And from an education standpoint, over something that would be a print or education, print through education, the only printing I'm advocating for would be print that is cherished. I think that's the kind of thing that is more appropriate from a sustainability standpoint, and that, the print option would be reusable bags that have prints on them from local artists. And the idea there is to, from a cherish standpoint, would be similar to like a coach purse, something that you would love to have because it's tied in the community. And on these bags, in addition to these custom prints from the loco, local artists, would be batavia, bataviabags.gov or something like that. And so when somebody would visit that URL that they see people carrying on their bags, they see all these videos, and, and that's how we get people educated and understanding about the bag program. There it is, pretty short and sweet. Any comments, questions, thoughts?
Go ahead, sir.
I have a question. So you did, you worked with the city for the videos that they've already put out. Okay, how did you analyze the viewership? How do you feel like the reach was?
I think it was awesome. The, Lori would, would say, when I was looking at the videos that went out of the, the road diet, if you look at the, the views on Facebook for all the videos that are there, they were averaging between four and seven hundred views on most of the videos, and these videos were hitting three thousand, two thousand. Lori just popped up, one of the mayor's stories, and that instantly got two point eight thousand. Lots of amazing comments, Lori said it, I forgot the number, the percentage of increase in traffic. But this is consistent with all my clients. I have shifted every single client, I've been doing, I've been in marketing for twenty-five years, and every single client I work with now I do nothing but short videos. That's the marketing that pops for everybody, and it's the most efficient. The average video cost, if you look it up for, for a small business, at the, at the low end is one to three thousand dollars per video, five to seven thousand on the mid-end, and we are trying to get our videos down to a hundred dollars per video on average. And then if you look at the engagement numbers, we're hitting them, so. Does that, does that answer that question?
Questions for Gary?
Oh, come on, nobody else?
And so one, one sort of question I have here would be, what's, what's kind of our theory of persuasion that we're engaging in here? Sort of, I think the intent is to sort of increase the understanding of the bag fee, certainly get more people to bring bags and to, you know, kind of stop using the disposable plastic bags as much as we can, you know? And so can you maybe just talk us through how you would envision these short-form videos being a persuasion tool that will sort of persuade people that they should bring their own back?
Yeah, and before I forget, I did want to mention that we would also produce at the, the site, it would be an e-commerce site as well, so you can buy the bags from the site. From a persuasion standpoint, I would count on you guys or whoever's in charge of this program to supply me the people that can tell me why. The specialization I have, and I'm teaching these interns, is how to have great conversations with people. And when you capture a great conversation with somebody who knows their shit, excuse me, that sells everything. That's all you need to do, is you need to just get people to, who know what they're talking about. And if you can find those people, we'll get it out of them.
Else?
Have you worked on a program like this, where you're, it's kind of controversial? You've got your people that believe in it and people that don't believe in it.
Best kind, right there, that is the very best. I definitely, I think the road diet was a really great example of how controversial. It was pretty great. Before we did the filming, for the road diet, a graphic was posted about the information, and then all these people were complaining on the post about, you know, complaining about the road diet. And I sent the message, I said, boy, I'm really hoping, to Lori, I said, I'm really hoping this videos make a difference because all the communication that typically comes out of the city is just text. You don't see that it's your neighbors, that this is who you're talking to. And I really felt like people would be different when they saw real people from the city talking about this program. And I said that, but the best part was I said, boy, it would be really great if we could do mean tweets. And Laura said, yeah, I'm up for that. And so I copied all the comments against that post and put it into ChatGPT, and I said, write me five mean tweets that are what people said, but hide their names, make up different names, make them a little funny, but let's, let's have those tweets. And we, so we got these questions, and the interns were interviewing Laura, and they, we gave Laura these mean tweets that this, that these people were saying, and she answered them without seeing before, and I was like, mic drop on some of the answers that you gave. So yes, I love the idea that there's people that are against this and complain about it, that's, that's what I want to do. I want to hit those people and change their minds.
I'd have to say that the mean tweets was probably my favorite, one of the road diets. It was pretty, you got me on that one.
Nothing else, thank you, Gary, appreciate it.
But not, last but not least, Melanie Santos Stefano from Vicarious Multimedia.
I like the sound of that coach bag, that's how. Yes, I'm Melanie Santos Stefano, my company is Vicarious Multimedia. We had the honor of working with the city very recently, combing through their communications, your communications in order to help strengthen your overall objectives and reaching people. You have a great team, I will say that. So just a little bit about us, we are a multimedia company. I founded it twenty-one years ago, which is starting to make me feel old. Over the last ten years, we've worked very specifically with local government on many, many public information campaigns, even those that people don't like. This year, we did two that I included in our examples. Village of Piutone, we worked with them for nine months, their downtown was basically blown up, and there was a lot of opposition, especially from all the businesses that were surrounded by it, and people who wanted to patronize the businesses, it was like a war zone. So that was, you know, a trick to make sure the people understood the value of what was happening and what the end result would be. Another one was Village of, oh, it starts with an H, I'm forgetting the name. Oh, gosh, I'm blanking. Not Huntley, near Huntley. Hampshire, it's Hampshire, I'm picturing the purple logo, sorry. So there, another very unhappy situation where they had to raise their water sewer infrastructure fees and rates in a pretty drastic way. So we work in this space where we need to help people understand the reasons behind things, the importance of things happening, including this sort of campaign. I envisioned a very multimedia approach, I respect the approach that the other individuals taking, we are very different. I am not specifically just on video, though we do do that, but we really want to make sure that we reach everybody, and people are in many, many different places. So we need to make sure that we are hitting all social media channels, certainly video, a website FAQ that really spells out why this is happening and the value for people. One of the things, when you're talking about video, I was envisioning someone talking about the opposite of not doing this, the impact on our environment, the severe impact. I'm glad you're doing this, I have a bag full of plastic bags that I need to bag up and recycle, just keep collecting plastic bags. So it's a really important project, whatever you decide. So we would incorporate all of those things, a bulletproof FAQ, making sure we have all our answers there for the people that want to go to a website, promoting those to social media. I also propose at least one in-person event where people can talk about this in open house format, where there are people that will answer questions as to why this is happening and help people understand in person. Those are very effective, we do that every single public information campaign we have, we really want people to be able to ask a direct question to someone who can answer it and have education behind it. So we really do propose communication in every channel we can get in. One of the things that we helped you establish is the Nextdoor page, you know, our older adults aren't necessarily all on TikTok or social media, but Nextdoor is actually a really excellent tool where they are. So that's an important segment of your population, and if a public information event were to be something you'd like to do, I would also propose, even though it's not environmentally friendly, a postcard to every home to make sure that every single resident understands that that event is happening and, and all the other ways to learn about this program. So. Questions, I'm happy to, I feel like this is blocking me.
Placement is fun. Any questions for Melanie?
I guess I'll kind of ask the same question I asked. I guess I'll kind of ask the same question I asked the other presenter. What is kind of your theory of persuasion here? Like, how do you view the act of persuasion, in particular, sort of from a government-to-citizen standpoint?
Yeah, it really is about helping people understand why this is happening. You know, our planet is in severe. And all the other drawers across the country, right? So we really do have to help people understand that sustainable practices are absolutely important. So I think that's kind of a larger theme, and helping people understand how smaller actions, dropping the plastic bag and getting something that is beautiful and designer. I love the idea because it's really streamlining it and saying, listen, we're going to give you. So I just, I feel like you just have to kind of help people to really understand how important it is, like, not just for Batavia, but globally, reinforcing.
We walk back and forth.
I'm sorry. Different organizations that also have their own followers, your school district, you know, park district, all the other public bodies that have their own separate followers on Facebook and all the socia ls and e-newsletters, and propose a partnership to really help and unite together to get the message across. You know, we really find great success in doing that. We really are able to reach a very large percentage of the population, and everyone is reached through that one mailer to the home and getting people, letting them know there's public information opportunities in person as well as digitally. So.
In terms of, I know you said you don't just do the video, you kind of have more of an all-encompassing type of campaign. And so I'm assuming based upon what you've told us, you've had experience with these types of things before. Have you found certain modalities to be more effective and others to be less effective when you are doing the combination campaign?
Well, video is highly effective. I mean, the engagement rates on video, this gentleman will tell you as well, they're much, much higher than the words. But we have to do it in a multifaceted way, multi-channel way, because not everybody subscribes to that. And we have people who aren't going to watch the video. They want to, they want to go in person and talk to somebody. So I would say that all of it's very important. I do think video has high engagement for sure, but there are other people that are subscribed to other things. Your seniors, the numbers on Nextdoor right now, as far as their engagement, they don't have any other social media channels that they subscribe to, about 50%. And the median age on Nextdoor is 65 years of age. So that's a really important segment of your population that we must reach, not only for this campaign, but also in general.
Questions? Well, thank you both very much for those presentations.
Appreciate it.
And so nice, too.
That if either of you have anything that you would like to submit to City Council following your presentations, just please forward it to Max. We'll make sure that everyone gets that. Thank you.
And on the flip side, Max, could you also collect questions from us? Because of course, I've thought of one for the previous presenter that already left and just in time to not get it to her. That would be great. Thank you.
And we'll share those questions and answers with all.
Kind of like the budget process.
Yes, exactly.
Okay. We're good with that. Looking forward, so that will be on the next COW agenda?
The 25th.
25th. Okay. We'll make our decision then. All right. Our next discussion is on a self-storage facility tax. Drew coming back. Talk about that.
Yes, so, yeah, we wanted to just put this before the council tonight, just as a discussion. As I outlined in the memo, you know, we had a lot of conversations through the course of the Batavia Square project in terms of, you know, loss of tax revenue, especially as, you know, fortunately, we've only had one big box go vacant over the years. But, you know, it's a concern that as, you know, if there are other vacancies in the future, especially on the commercial corridors, that, you know, those type of uses might, at least from a market demand standpoint, look to occupy some of our commercial spaces. So, you know, as a rule, we've been trying to be very protective. As staff felt, we were, you know, what we accomplished with the Batavia Square development was able to really limit the zoning limitation, you know, keep zoning limitations in a way to, you know, really regulate the use in a very cohesive way in terms of, you know, addressing any potential proliferation of the use, especially in our commercial quarters. But as I mentioned in the memo, we always do get inquiries about that type of use. And, you know, with that project, one of the things we were looking at investigating was whether there's other ways to kind of raise, you know, try and address the missing tax revenue that might happen with those uses, as well as just, you know, another opportunity to address the, you know, the always, the revenue question we always have with budgets each year. So what we found was many municipalities that are home rule in Illinois do have a self-storage tax. Most of them assess that at a 5% tax rate. There were, actually, I said in memo three, but it's actually four that have less than that. But two of those four also have local business registration or other licensing that basically adds on another fee beyond that. So I think it's, you know, they were, you know, they're trying to address it in a couple of different ways. But, you know, for the most part, the other reason that some also had lower rates were they were also implementing a phased-in approach. One of the things we suggested in the memo is that if we do apply this, it would probably be for rentals after a certain date, just to kind of let not, so there would not be a sudden of a sticker shock or something of that sort. We did look, again, like how other municipalities are budgeting for this. One municipality was getting, or was budgeting for about $100,000 a year from this, but they have more facilities. You know, we have two, or we'll have two of a more substantial size and then a smaller space within our municipality. So the example ones that we were looking at, that had more facilities than we may have, so that number is a bit bigger, but they were averaging about $15,000 a year per facility. With it being a 5% tax, you know, it's very much depending on what the leases charge, you know, for indoor-conditioned spaces are usually higher than non-conditioned outdoor spaces, but that's always a factor in terms of how it would actually apply to, you know, property or to a lease. But essentially, you know, with a 5%, you know, a tax applied, you know, $100 space, you know, that might be, you know, I'm just looking at examples in the area. You know, in terms of pricing, you know, that might be like a 10x10 outdoor space, and that, you know, that tax would be $5 a month or $60 a year on, you know, a, what would be about a $1,200 lease overall. On a $500 per month space, you know, that tax for an individual would be about $25 a month, which, you know, would be about $300 a year altogether. So, again, you know, we were just looking at this kind of at a high level initially. If the council does want us to pursue it, we would come back to you with additional information, draft ordinance, and, you know, the intention would be if we get to that point, that we would inform the different storage companies that we're aware of in town, so they'd have an opportunity to discuss that with you and discuss those pluses and minuses. So, and that's where, you know, where we're at today, and just wanted to bring it to you as to whether we should look at that any further.
Is our closest neighbor that has this?
So within King County, Carpenter'sville is the only community that does assess that. We didn't find, like Aurora or Elgin, being other home rule municipalities, nor did St. Charles. But it was kind of a mix across the board. You know, a lot of Cook County communities, but there was definitely some in Lake County, Will County, the other color counties.
Now, those counties that are those cities that are in Cook, or in King County, do they have the business registration fee? Or is it just Carpenter'sville just has it, and then the rest goes into Cook County?
So, let me just check my notes here. Really, the one, in terms of Carpenter'sville was a flat 5% tax. The ones that were charging like the business registration or the additional, those were both in Cook County, one was Schiller Park, and then the other was River Grove. So, and again, that was less common. I mean, it was only two of the 24 that we found.
Do you know how long Carpenter'sville has had their tax?
Carpenter'sville, I don't have a year. Some of the ones that were more recently adopted were Plainfield this past year adopted it, Romeo Ville adopted it in 2023, and there, I think there was one or two other that we did have a date. Willowbrook was another that we had a date that was more recently discussed, in 2020.
Nothing in Geneva or St. Charles?
Geneva would not be able to charge it because they're not home rule.
Not home rule.
But St. Charles does not currently have one.
They do not.
Yeah.
Has it been shown to be a good deterrent for these coming to town?
That, you know, there's, it's probably all anecdotal, like, in terms of if it's having, you know, effect. I think for less, it didn't seem, other than maybe Plainfield, because they do have some box vacancies, there is some larger spaces on 59. So that might have, you know, based on what I saw, their reports and their information, that might have been attempting to try and address, trying to mitigate that. I believe they also require, you know, they still require conditional use, like, you know, we have in certain districts. But it seems like that that might have been a more proactive effort. You know, as I mentioned in the memo, like, it is a, you know, it's very much a trend in terms of development currently where, you know, you find a space that's either less traveled, but near a retail corridor, and see if you can, you know, put a storage facility on that property. So that, you know, just as a trend, especially with, you know, retail markets, you know, or the shifts in retail that happened over the years, you know, that definitely is a thing that they also look forward to because, you know, with, they do want to be where people are. So those retail corridors oftentimes are good, easy ways to advertise the facilities and services.
Do we know if any of these municipalities have had a self-storage leave because of it?
I didn't find any information, or we didn't find information on that, but, you know, with the 5% being as standard as it was, it didn't seem like, I don't know that it addressed any that might have left, but you could have had smaller use, you know, a smaller storage company might say, this might not be worth our time, or, you know. But with it being 5%, it, at least I did not find any information about that.
Yeah, okay. No, that's fair. Yeah, I don't know that I'm necessarily in favor, but it's, as a deterrent, there's other things we can do as a deterrent. We've talked about that. And obviously, for the Sam's Club property, we, that's, we'd vote conditionally on that. And had we had this, would that property ever develop the way it's going to, which is going to provide us much more significant retail tax than had it just been self-storage? So we've been trailblazers on the Fox River. I don't know if we always want to be the trailblazer as we introduce new fees and taxes to people. So it's not one that I'm in favor of right now personally. So I don't know about everybody else, but that's where I sit.
Sort of, I'm, as I'm looking at this, I'm sort of less concerned about sort of the tax revenue side of it. You know, we've been doing fine without it, so I don't really see it as a great need in terms of a revenue stream. But I do see the value of it as a way to ensure that self-storage is going in the places we want it and staying out of, say, Randall Road or Kirk Wright, kind of our high-traffic places, where we'd rather have retail, which I think is an appropriate thing for us to think about. But it does open the question, I think, similar to what Alderman Uier was sharing there. I'd be interested in hearing some alternatives to just sort of monetary taxes on how we might better direct self-storage units to the parts of town we think they would better fit the character and what we hope to see in that part of town versus, say, right on the Randall Road strip. Not that they shouldn't be on Randall Road necessarily, but, you know, I think retail is kind of what we intend to be there. And I do also, I would like to see some long-term communities. Like, I'd like to see some information. I think it was a great question to ask when these were implemented, and I'd love to see kind of what the effect was, if we can see it at all. Recent adoption is one thing, but what about towns that have had it for years? Has that led to, you know, do they kind of have fewer self-storage units? Do they have the same? Does it not actually matter? I don't know. I kind of just don't know if this is actually an effective tool or not for what I'm interested in, which is kind of directing self-storage to the right parts of town. So.
I could respond to that. The way that we have restricted where this can be located, it's not allowed to be anywhere on Randall Road. Zoning restricts it. So that is a tool that we have available to us and that we can use. But I would also, with regard to revenues, we in our last budget had a significant gap between revenues and expenses. And so we do and are looking for ways to address that issue.
I can also just add that, you know, this self, you know, using this self-storage, the new one, as an example, that took the place of a sales tax generating facility. Granted, the front part is being used for, you know, substantial sales tax generating, but, you know, if we didn't negotiate that, you know, we would have had a building, a large building, that would have been just self-storage in theory. So we get zero sales tax on that, and we do not get any type of, you know, real benefit with traffic, you know, that really benefits the retail. And so, you know, when we look at these, you know, self-storage isn't really the great retail use you want to have on your retail quarters. Yes, we do restrict it by the zoning, but it would provide, you know, at least some revenue that would make up the losses that we're getting for the sales tax if we do have them in those areas.
Certainly. And one thing is that once a self-storage unit's in there, it's not leaving, right? Like, it's not going to turn back into retail. So I certainly understand that. I think we, you know, we don't want to talk specifically about properties. Who knows? Maybe it would have been vacant forever. Maybe it would have been, I don't know, right? Like, that's where we're sort of looking at our crystal ball here. But I do see the value in this, and that capacity allows us some flexibility with zoning and with sort of a financial incentive to incentivize certain actions and de-incentivize other actions. But I think we need to be really careful about it. I do think we need to really think carefully about it.
Right.
And I want some insight on that, is I think the follow-up to that. I'd love to see some long-term, kind of what have tax impacts been on self-storage in particular.
Sure. Yeah, and, you know, with it just kind of being a conceptual discussion, we didn't necessarily want to start polling the other municipalities, but that's certainly something we can kind of get a more of a feel for in terms of, you know, the duration of how long many of these municipalities may have had it, if there are impacts, and then kind of what that valuation is. Because again, it's, it's a little hard, at least to kind of give that initial number of like, you know, what would that end up being? But we might be able, at least kind of looking at, you know, some of the numbers from other municipalities, kind of at least get a ballpark, since we are kind of all in the same overall market. But, you know, obviously, there's probably more differences with maybe the south suburbs versus us in the west suburbs, et cetera. So.
Just to get the information, because others obviously want some of this information, I don't know if we can get the, I don't know what term to use, but I'll say vacancy rate of the self-storage units in these places that have it, because is it just pushing people? Let's give it an example. It's like a tariff. You're going to go and do something somewhere else that you can for cheaper, because obviously those, the rents there are going to be higher, because it's not like self-storage is paying for it, the people are paying for it. So does it just end up pushing it away, and then you don't have the tax revenue because not as many people are renting? So you're, the revenue expectation ends up not being what you would expect it to, especially if you do it to the new one that is about to open, and then it's like, oh, shoot, their prices are higher, so people go elsewhere.
So. And I'm sorry, just to have a bit of a discussion on that, because you're, something that piqued my interest when Alderman Soffo brought it up, too. You know, Geneva not being home rule, they couldn't do this. So in theory, no matter what, our exact neighbor will in theory be at least 5% cheaper if we do this. But maybe we want all our used couches in Geneva, right? Like, maybe we want them to be our storage spot, and we can use our land for retail and homes. and homes. And if Geneva wants to be cheaper, maybe they can choose to do that. I don't know, just another thought. I don't know what the right answer there is, but, you know, that it may be sort of a hidden advantage. Again, because once you build, in my opinion, once you build a self-storage unit, it doesn't go away. The self-storage unit, my father put my eight-year-old bike in, is still there, you know, 37 years later, whatever it is, I don't know how old I am. And so once we build a self-storage unit, it's, it's hard for me to imagine it not being self-storage for 50 years or whatever it does.
Sure. And that's possible, but I guess my point, we don't have much in town. We've been able to make it so that it can't go on Randall Road. So unless we, unless somebody comes to us with some massive proposal that it's like, oh, yeah, we'll take that front-end retail to offset the back end that we don't like, which is exactly what we did. So I don't know that we're in a situation, and if self-storage went out in the industrial park, that isn't gaining retail either. So it's, I don't know, I would, I'd like to see the numbers, just, just out of curiosity. But I think we've done enough, or again, we can do enough to prevent it from coming into our town.
I think in terms of the vacancy numbers, we'll have to see if there's like some trade publication or something. At least, it may not have specific town-to-town, but maybe might have some trend information.
I was just going to say, I think it'll be difficult to get that information from private businesses. It would be giving a competitive advantage there. But I think with regard to this, the 5% fee, you know, that's something that a company who is looking to locate here is going to look at, because in all likelihood, they will be passing that cost along. But there is also another thing they're going to be looking at is, a customer probably wants their items as close to their home as possible, too. So there is that trade-off. You know, there's just a myriad of factors that they're looking at. You know, the company that located there shared that, you know, seeing the new housing division, the subdivision that was being built right behind there, that was a very attractive aspect to this, as well as the lack of similar facilities within our city.
Yeah, offhand, I forget what the number was, but their, their trade area or market area that they were indicating that you pull from was a lot smaller than you would expect for, you know, another traditional commercial use or something of that sort.
Okay, so there are zoning restrictions on where storage could be. Is there, are there that many places in town that self-storage could go that it would be replacing or taking away from possible retail tax rep?
Sure, I can address that. I mean, just kind of in terms of, just to kind of give a historical, how our zoning was applied, but, you know, previous, or, and continues to this day, but within the general commercial district, we prohibited self-storage, or it was not allowed use. And primarily, it's allowed in, I believe it's the GI General Industrial and LI Limited Industrial. I believe it's a permitted use in both of those circumstances. And so, you know, the, even going back probably to the 1971 code, the intention was to steer storage to, to basically the industrial park, or, you know, Kirk Road, obviously, with the one we have. The change that we made, just for the explanation as well, we rezoned the property, the old Sam's Club property, to the MU mixed-use district. And then we created, there's like three or four specific standards where we would allow self-storage as a conditional use in the MU district. And that was the distance of the building away from a major road in terms of county strategic arterial or our own arterial. There was a requirement that it be in a true mixed-use building with another use. And then, you know, actually, I think we might even named a few specific uses, like a car dealership. So it, you know, from that standpoint, it's a very limited standpoint. If we had a large box, you know, big-box user go out on Randall Road, it would really be just market pressure where we would probably have a lot of inquiries about it. And like the Sam's Club, where maybe for a couple of years, we were able to bat the idea away without, you know, somebody going through that next step and pursuing it further. But at some point, we would probably, especially with a prolonged vacancy, see a situation to, again, where somebody would be looking to, to use that space again for storage.
I'll say that I am in support of this tax as kind of a tool in the toolbox, along with the other things that we've discussed in the zoning and the other restrictions, as a deterrent, because I would like to see Batavia seem less welcome to these uses. Just the opportunity lost for that to be a more productive piece of property, a more productive piece of land, whether it's industrial, light industrial, or a special case somewhere else. You know, as, as trends change and, and building needs change, I mean, personally, I would rather see a vacant property demolished into open space, and that would be a more productive use of the land and of higher value, I think, to the community than to have a lot of properties eaten up by Kevin's old bike and other sofas and stuff like that.
That's a good bike.
What's that? Oh, Nick, go ahead.
Well, thanks. One, I just wanted to clarify one thing. This would be like a retail sales tax, right? It would apply to the customer?
Well, essentially, it would be, yeah, essentially, it would be similar to a sales tax. You know, I don't think, I mean, I guess we could structure it in a way where one entity's more responsible for paying it, but essentially, you know, whether it's to the owner of the building or to the occupant, we know it's going to get passed on to the renter, essentially.
Right. And then have you, I'm sure, it wouldn't necessarily be positive, but have you received any feedback from any storage owners on this?
Not yet. We didn't start talking about it with, with the storage facilities in town, just not knowing, you know, if, if the council was, did not want to pursue that, that idea. We just didn't want to start rocking the boat on, on raising it as a topic. But that's where, if, you know, if we do kind of go into a next step and have a draft ordinance for you, we would, you know, definitely be making contact with them, giving them some lead time so that we can have, you know, those conversations and see if there are, you know, at least concerns that could be addressed with revisions or, you know, or if it's just they wouldn't want to come here and plead their case, too.
Sure. Okay. Well, that, I would just, in my opinion, I would welcome more information, that being one of them. But in, in general, I think I'm in, in favor of this from a standpoint of overcoming the loss of retail, and if it's a deterrent, it's a deterrent for this, this type of business. So, but I would, I agree in that we should get some more information before plunging into it. But thank you.
Anything else? Do you have enough direction to move from? Any questions for us?
I think we do.
Okay. Great. Thank you so much.
Thanks.
Okay. And next is ordinance 2025-10, an ordinance authorizing the city of Batavia to issue waterworks revenue bonds in an aggregate principal not to exceed $7 million in evidence of loans issued pursuant to the Public Water Supply Loan Program. And Peggy, I'll let you take it.
Hello. This is authorizing ordinance for our IPA, excuse me, IPA loan application. This would, is anticipated to be the final IPA loan for lead service line replacement. Our engineers have told us they expect it to come in under $7 million, but we always want to authorize the maximum cost to ensure that we cover everything.
Anyone have any questions?
This would, we are applying for the loan, I should have added, at 0% for 30 years. So we want to take advantage of that, if at all possible.
And at all times, I love the opportunity to mention how incredible our water department has been and their superintendent, Jeremy Barkey, in getting us to be at a point that I don't know any other municipality in the state of Illinois that is far as we are in eliminating the lead service lines in our community, and what an incredible positive impact that that will have in the health of our community for forever. So we really appreciate city council's support of this project.
And I would add that it made us fortunate to be able to obtain a $4 million grant for the first round. And then this, our second loan was also 0% for 30 years. So because he was ready to go with our project, we had a better chance of obtaining the funds.
That first round is forgivable, right, Peggy?
Right. It was a full grant.
A grant.
Yes.
I have a question. So I understand that this money is coming through Illinois. How has Illinois gained the money? And is there a guarantee that we're going to get the money?
No.
Thing that's going on?
If the loan is not approved, we would have to discuss whether or not we would want to move forward with some other type of funding. Most likely not. It would probably be delayed. And it's partially funded federal and state. So we don't know. Actually, all of our IP loans get some federal funding, but the state also has their own funds, and when they decide to make a payout, it could come from either source, and we don't know until we get it if it'll be federal or state.
I mean, I just asked that question just because of everything that's going on and just want that out there. I'm absolutely, you know, in favor of moving forward with, you know, applying for this, but, you know, with that cautionary of, we may not get it, which would be unfortunate, because this is for our residents.
Did you want to add something, Gary?
Just to add that in the water and wastewater industries, the loan funds that we receive are revolving loan funds. So that, that means that as we pay it back, that money that we pay back goes to another community, and so on and so forth. So it's not, it's not just money coming in from someplace, going out to communities and never, never going back to the, to the front again. It's a revolving fund. That, that, that leads to more security in that if you take out the loan, you will, you will get the funds, because they're coming from someone else who's paying back their loans.
But, you know, if the state has to readjust some of their financing, can they take from that bucket to pay other bills?
You get a little beyond my knowledge level, because as Peggy mentioned, some of that money is also coming from the feds. So what the state's authority is to take out from that bucket, you're, you're beyond me. I do not know.
Okay. Thank you.
I don't know the answer to that either. They seem to be able to move things around to lots of different buckets, but there's legislation to support it if they do. But if we get the loan agreement, they would be obligated to fund the loan.
Right. Okay. And can you reiterate again how many homes this will, this will cover? Do you know that number off the top of your head?
I don't. I was just working on the application, but I didn't get to the portion on the homes. I think that Jeremy said 500.
There were about 800. And in the first two years, we've done about 400? Yeah, 450.
This should cover it. This should be less to 100%. That's fantastic.
Mm-hmm.
The grass that was planted in my front lawn after you replaced mine is the best-looking part of my grass, so I appreciate that.
It's my understanding that the contractors.
Doing a great job. Yes. We've had two different contractors, and both of them have done a really great job.
The whole process was fantastic from the end user. All right, any other questions? All right. If not, I'll make the motion to approve ordinance 2025-10.
Second.
Motion by Beck, second by Uer. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, motion carries. Thank you, Peggy. And then moving on to project status.
I have a couple of great news items from Public Works today. I attended the American Public Works Association Fox Valley Branch Awards Luncheon, and there, the city of Batavia was presented an award for Transportation Project of the Year, less than $5 million, for the Wilson Street and Prairie Street Intersection Improvements. And we attended with our contractors who worked on the project with us, and Rahat gave a presentation to a roomful of people about all of the very complex aspects of that project and how it took coordination amongst many different parties and agencies and high level of communication with the neighbors who surrounded that area, but that we also were very, it was very beneficial, the support that we got from the community during that period of time for their patience, because it is a significant intersection in our community. And people were patient, but they were glad to see the changes that were brought to that area, and it's really just transformed that intersection. And so it was really a proud moment to receive the award, but wanted to share it with all of you who approved the city's portion of this project, which, you know, comparatively, the city of Batavia only paid 19% of the costs of this project. The rest of the costs of the project came in state and federal grant funding. So that's a big success story for us. Another big success, we were notified over the weekend that the city is going to receive a grant of half a million dollars from the IEP. It's Green Infrastructure Grant Program, and it will be for Mahoney Creek Rest, Stream Restoration, that portion that goes through Michael Wild Park. And so it'll be a collaboration between the Park District and the city. The majority of the funding will come from this grant, but whatever additional costs that there are will be shared by the Park District and by the city. We are going to outlay those costs in the beginning for that project so that the Park District can then add that into their budget next year in order to reimburse us for those costs. But those were two great news items for today. Andrea, did you have anything to add about the Geico grant?
It's going to be a huge addition. Hot surprise. There we go. As Laura said, we did find out over the weekend, but I had received a call 11 months ago, and I, only a couple, handful of people knew that we were given the award, but we had to make sure we got the funding. So I was really excited to see that on Saturday and sent that out. So we will be working with our consultant, and I have to work with Kevin, to review the agreement. And at the same time that we applied for the Green Infrastructure Grant, we also applied for a 319 grant, which we haven't heard back, which I hear is good news, so cross your fingers, and maybe we'll get some additional funding that can then pay for our portion of the grant. But this will be reintroducing the stream in Michael Wild Park. Years ago, it was piped, and it ends up backing up as soon as a leaf clogs and makes those residence yards kind of a mess. And then we will be putting in wetlands in that area as well to make it back to a little bit more native. So it's an exciting project for the area.
Andrea. Other things with the snowstorm expected tomorrow, Groot has sent a message out to all its customers. It's going to begin its collection tomorrow at 6:00 a.m. so that it can try to get most of that collection done before the heaviest of the snow is expected. Lori Botterman let me know that the chatbot on our website is active now, so feel free to go there and ask it any question that you want an answer to, and hopefully it'll get you pointed to the information that you're looking for. Something that was on the consent agenda today that I didn't want to just gloss over is the fact those abating resolutions. And take the opportunity to say that what those represent is that in order to secure those loans, the city had to promise that it would use property taxes, if necessary, to service that debt. And we're very proud of the fact that we're able to service all of that debt with other revenue sources and that we have never had to levy any property tax in order to service that debt. that debt. Let's see. Yep, that's it, unless anybody has any questions for me. Yes.
When do you expect to put out an RFP on getting the feasibility study for the dam or for the whitewater?
December of 2024.
Oh, you put out an RFP already?
We put it out already, and we have the responses. So that discussion should be coming back to city council very shortly. We have questions for the two companies that provided us with proposals. So we want to seek some clarifications, because their numbers were pretty far apart from one another. So we want to just maybe talk a little bit more with each of them about their ideas of scoping the project. And then we'll bring that conversation to city council for next steps.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Okay, hearing none, then I will take a motion to go into executive session. Motion by Sulfus, second by Uer. All in favor? All opposed? All right, going to executive session.
And there will be no decisions coming out of that executive session, so.